Call this meeting the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 6th edition of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. First meeting in the new year and hope that everybody has had a good holiday and we're ready to get down to work for the new year. This time I'd like to call Reverend Gary Richards from Friendship United Methodist Church to the podium to come forward and give our invocation.
Let us pray. Oh, Lord, from the very beginning of our republic, our nation's leaders have sought heavily guidance in the execution of the duties of their offices. A providential guidance to move their words and actions toward the common good. A providential guidance that reminds them that the work of this body is like a stone falling into a pond that ripples forth into many generations. A providential guidance that calls upon them to embrace the highest ideals of our nation, ideals of equality, justice, charity, liberty, and opportunity. A providential guidance that calls upon them humbly to remember that our community and our nation will always be a work in progress as we press forward toward a more perfect union. Lord, it is in that spirit that we ask your blessing upon these servants of our community. Grant them your wisdom, your patience, and your courage to act in the common good even when it is unpopular to do so. Also, Lord, we ask that these your public servants may never feel a separation from those they serve. Help them to honor their connectedness with you, oh, Lord, and one another regardless of race, creed, or religion, and enable them to discover a joyful strength in the diversity of Iredell County. So, God, pour out your blessings upon these your servants. Grant them your courage for the present, a vision for the future, and compassion for all. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Richards. Please stand and join me in pleading this flag of our country. Praise the Lord on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Mashburn, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, under, and I think it would be appropriate to put in under new business, there are three items. These are, two of these items I've had an opportunity to discuss with you previously. One is to get your concurrence with the proposed Iredell County Organizational Chart that was presented to you earlier. Also is to get your concurrence to allow the staff to negotiate with Walter, Robbs, Callahan, and Pierce as far as the design on the animal shelter. And the third was one that I was not aware of until I actually went back into my office after the meeting and I had an email from Dr. Terry Holliday with the Iowa State School System requesting that the Facilities Task Force meet prior to the county commissioners' retreat. The county commissioners' retreat is scheduled, as you know, for February the 27th. Dr. Holliday is asking that the task force meet prior to that, and so I wanted to make you aware of that. It's those three items, and I'd like to just add those under new business and take care of them at that time.
Okay, thank you.
I have no further adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. We have no presentations this evening or appointments for the board or public hearings. So, Mr. Mashburn, would you give us the administrative matters?
And there were no further adjustments to the agenda from the staff?
Well, I guess then, I guess I should have a motion then that, toward the agenda then. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made, the agenda is approved as is. On, if ever let it be known by, say, an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, the following items are under consent agenda. Number, item A is a request from the Sheriff's Department for approval of a budget amendment, which would be Budget Amendment Number 35, to purchase five laptop computers from federal equity sharing funds. Item B is a request from the Sheriff's Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 36, to appropriate federal equity sharing funds for the purchase by Star Witness Field Agent Hardware Software Program. Item C is a request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 37, to allocate additional women, infants, and children, or WIC grant revenues, and for those funds to be used to increase a processing assistant, threes from a part .8 full-time equivalent to a full-time position. Item H is request for approval of the December 7 and December 16, 2008 minutes. Mr. Chair, those are the items under consent.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Is there a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made, we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Ayes have it. Motion's approved.
Mr. Chair, I think I also neglected one, and I apologize for that because there was some discussion, but I believe you finally did put item D on consent agenda as well, and that was the Iredell County Fire Tax Board's request to adopt a false fire alarm ordinance. Unless I'm mistaken, I believe you also agreed to put that on consent agenda.
I did have that marked, is any?
My understanding, Mr. Mashburn, is be on the consent agenda with that one amendment.
Yes, and I apologize for that. There was discussion and I failed to mark it down. So, I would just recommend that you vote on that item now.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt the false fire alarm ordinance with the amendment that we discussed in our agenda briefing, and that would be on page four. Section 5.48, paragraph B, where the, be required that the incident commander would notify the property owner after the second false alarm. That should he receive one more false alarm, that a penalty would ensue.
Motion's made, is any discussion? Here none? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay. Next three item, oh, the next item was, we're going to skip over E and go directly to Memo Six, Request for Discussion Concerning Proposed NCA/CC Legislative Goals and Policy Statements to Be Considered at the January Conference in Raleigh, North Carolina. You all have in your packet the list of goals for this year's session, and you all had opportunity to look at these. I'm going to ask you if, I'm going to go by seniority, Mr. Johnson, so I know you relish that position, to state your, any issues you have for or against any of the policies.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if it's that obvious, then I'll take advantage of the opportunity. The first one is on taxation and finance, item number one. Just because I'm against the first one, don't think that I'm going to be that difficult. I think, as we discussed earlier, this is the best, this is the best agenda that the association has presented probably since I've been on this board. It's often the case, I find myself in disagreement with these folks, but this time I think it's a very realistic approach that they're taking to new legislation. That item reads, "Revenue Options and Protection, Seek Legislation to Allow All Counties to Act by Resolution. Any or All Revenue Options From Among Those Has Been Authorized For Any County Include Local Options, Sales Taxes, Fair Food Taxes, Impact Taxes, and Real Estate Transfer Taxes, and To Preserve Existing Local Revenue." As far as preserving the existing local revenue, that's a pretty good idea, but I'm of the opinion you just should make it as difficult for any elected body to raise taxes as possible for that reason. I can't support item number one. On human services, I have some problems with all of them under two, except the second one, where it says, "Restore Financial Incentives For Counties Who Ought To Be Electing Counties." As we talked about earlier when Mr. Wall came to us, that those folks have done a good job as far as fine tuning that legislation that exists. You get more horsepower out of it as far as saving the taxpayers' money, but nevertheless, the legislature continues to whittle at that and make it more difficult for counties to be electing counties. So, I think that's a good idea.
Are you saying you would oppose all of number two, except that?
Under public education, I still have the same heartburn about statewide school bonds that I've always had, and that is the fact that any time there's a statewide school bond, Iredell County winds up on the short end.
Absolutely.
Taxpayers in this county, every time that's occurred, there's tax money that goes out of this county to construct schools in other counties. And the only fair way to do that is on a per pupil basis.
So, did you put two, three, and four in that category?
Yes, sir.
What page is that?
That's on Public Education, seven of 18.
I have two, three, and four for that same reason.
And if they, if there is debate on it, then I think it should be the position of this board, that if there is the desire of the legislature to approve the statewide school bond or the statewide allocations of any money, they need to go away with the low wealth, high growth designations, and it should be on a per pupil basis.
That was two, three, and four. You're talking about the Public School Capital Building Fund as well?
Yes, sir. All of that should be, if debate ensues, and our delegate, I think, should represent our position that we would agree to that only in the event that it's on a per pupil I don't think we're getting, contrary to what historically has been the position of the school board, I think we're pretty much in agreement on that. I did have one other item, apparently. Let me back up to page one of 18, and I flipped by that by mistake. Gang Prevention, Support Additional Funds For Gang Prevention, Intervention, and Suppression Activities?
No.
Yeah, I'm against that, and I'll tell you what, when you say you're against something like that, it makes you, some people have a knee-jerk reaction that you're for violence and juvenile delinquency. But it's such as the case on so many of these programs, they wind up treating symptoms and they do not address the problem. Gang violence is a symptom, ladies and gentlemen, it is not a problem. It is a symptom of a deeper problem, and the deeper problem is the moral decline of our culture. And if we're willing and we have the confidence to express that in a public debate, the problem is not going to get better. The only thing that will be accomplished, if we continue to spend money on these programs like this, those problems will still exist, they will still grow worse, the only thing we will accomplish is the bankruptcy of the public treasury. And I think that we need to be bold enough as leaders to say, and if I may be so bold to say in a public hearing like this, that there needs to be a spiritual revival in our culture. And we need to understand that there are such things as moral absolutes, where some things are right and some things are wrong, and we need to be bold enough to instruct our children in that fashion. For that reason, I oppose that.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson, you're next in seniority.
I don't want to go back and repeat any of the, do you want me to confirm my nays?
Well, we can, if you're in agreement, you can, you can go ahead and state that. I'll put your initial beside it.
Right, on page, on page one of 18, which is Justice and Public Safety, I was against number three for the exact same reasons, number four, for supporting appropriations to get rid of meth labs. I think we have to be consistent of being against increased appropriations across the board, and the reason I say that is for every new program that they, that they start, they will figure out a way to get the counties to pay for the existing programs that they will no longer have money for.
We know the state doesn't have any money for any progress.
And they don't have money for anything new. So, if item number four means that they have to create additional appropriations, I can't support it, not because I'm for meth, it's just, I think we need to be consistent on...
Should we question that, or are you going to, if it's a possibility that they'd be moving funds into that area?
I said I would be against it if they were talking about increasing.
Okay.
Okay. If they're just, if they're just stating that we should continue to fight it, then that's fine.
Okay.
We certainly shouldn't increase it. On, on page three of 18, which is under Environment, Water, and Sewer Infrastructure, I know that there's, that counties received some benefits for it in the past, but I tell you, for the same reason, I think school money doesn't get distributed in wise ways from the state. I think water and sewer, the same thing happens, so I can't support number one, which is, which is basically the state coming in and helping some municipalities in areas with water and sewer, but not others.
How often do we get any help, as far as, not the county, but our municipalities?
The only people asking for any help, I'm aware of right now, is Harmony.
And they're asking.
But there's not any money.
Right. And if there is money, they won't, you know, it's going to go someplace else. Under Human Services, I can support what Commissioner Johnson said about item number Under Agriculture, page six of 10, I can support number one, okay, which I don't, it says, "Support Legislation To Increase Funding," and then later on it says, "To Assure That Existing, That Existing Level Of Service Is Maintained." If you just take away the words "to increase" and just say, "Support Legislation Funding Agricultural Research And Extension Services To Assure That Existing Research Stations," or whatever, "Are Maintained At The Current Level Of Service," I think that takes away any ambiguity about, about it. Otherwise, I do support that. And under Public Education, page seven of 18, I thought items number two, three, and four sound good, but they would not benefit Iredell County. Other counties would benefit, and we would write the checks. So, for that reason and that reason alone, I can't support two, three, and four. And that's my Cliff Notes version.
Okay. Mr. Caddell.
I guess I voiced general objection to the entire document on the grounds that the scheme for the people of Iredell County expressing what they want from the legislature and the state government is for them to elect representatives to the state government and elect the governor. And it seems to me that as a county commission, we're spending $18,000 to lobby on behalf of local government, when local government is in fact a constitutional part of state government. And so, to me, the people of Iredell County should be speaking with their local representatives and with the governor's office, and we shouldn't be lobbying with their tax dollars to do this. In addition, when I was researching this, I came across a brochure that this organization, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, had come up with that said, "For $750, a business who was, who they advertised, you know, if you're doing business with county government, then for $750, we will make you what they call an associate member of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners." And then they proceed in that document to say that this will guarantee you unique access to members of the county commissions and members of local government. And to me, that sounds like it, for $750, you get an unfair advantage and unique access to elected officials, and which I have to think is, is wrong. So, I guess I object to this whole process, as well as to several individual items here, but that's something for another day.
Okay, we have, I guess we should look at some discussion, even though, Mr. Robertson, I think you concur with Mr. Johnson on most, all of his issues. Mr. Johnson, you've heard Mr. Robertson.
I don't take any exception to what Mr. Robertson said. He, I think it's fair to say, he caught a few things I didn't, and I caught a few things he didn't, and once they were brought to light, I agree with everything that he said. So, if we can combine the...
Well, I feel comfortable with, with all of those. I agree with Mr. Johnson. I think this is probably the best set of goals that this, that they've come up with since I've been a member here. Some years, it's hard to look at these goals and see anything that you really can agree with. And remember, these are goals that were set by the Board of Directors, who are, the Board of Directors are our county commissioners like ourselves, that, that meet together at various times of the year and come up with goals. It doesn't mean that everybody in North Carolina agrees with these goals, that's what we're going to be voting on next week. If there is no disagreement, I guess we should, probably should vote. I must take this as a consent item. I guess it's, is that appropriate?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would, if you're going to, if we're going to have a motion, then I either want to make my own motion or make an amendment to that motion, but either way, I would like to make a motion that we investigate the legality or the ethical, possible ethical impropriety of selling access for $750.
I understand what you're saying, but this is not the issue we're bringing up right now. This can be addressed, and probably it will be addressed. I think Mr. Mashburn's already got some data on that, but right now, the issue is on the goals, and so, in light of, of what Mr. Robertson, Mr. Johnson has said, is there a motion we accept the goals that have been, that have been, the goals as amended?
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman, with the amendments that Mr. Robertson and I have offered. I agree, I'm sympathetic to Mr. Caddell's point of view. Oftentimes, the question that crosses through my mind when I've had problems with something, should I simply divorce myself from the issue and launch a full assault? Or should I engage, stay engaged in the process and try to make it better? And I think this is one of those times when I think you need to stay engaged in the process and try to make it better, rather than total withdrawal. I think that, I do think that the leadership of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is, is much more big government than the average person in Iredell County. I certainly do, and I've said this before, oftentimes, if the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners thinks it's a good idea, then it's probably a bad idea. But having said that, there are times when you need to stay engaged with the process and press an agenda, and I think it's one of those times.
Okay, motion that's been made that we accept the goals as amended. Any other discussion?
If I could, I mean, part of what we're trying to do here is, is, is to give the board's input for, for how the discussion of our delegates at this meeting, how that should go. And I think most, most families right now, with rare exceptions, probably having to take a real hard look at their household budgets, and they're going to be a whole lot more frugal in 2009 than they were in, in previous years. In addition to that, I think most folks aren't looking, they're probably looking at ways to maybe spend less or hold the line. I think, I think most folks are taking a financial conservative approach in their personal finances, and I think it would be in, in, in our recommendations here, we've basically said we think that it would be inappropriate to, for the county to ask the state to do more when, when in reality, we know that they're not going to have the money to do more, just like Iredell County is not going to have additional money to do more. It's going to be everything that, it's going to take a lot of, a lot of frugality just to maintain the current level of services in an environment of slower growth or no growth in revenues. So, I just think that, that approach, and I hope that that mindset is already there when you go to the meeting, Mr. Williams, but if it's not, I mean, I just think that's a, that's a nice way of saying we, we need to be, we don't need to be asking the state to do something that we know darn well that they cannot do, which is spend more money on new stuff.
And one thing to consider, too, a lot of these goals were set at a time earlier in the year when maybe the economic situation wasn't quite as rough as it is now, and probably some of the directors who have set these goals would like to maybe revisit them themselves, and when it comes time to vote, you never know how they're going to vote. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I was speaking opposition to the motion because I don't think we have constitutional authority as a, as a county commission to lobby the state legislature on behalf of Iredell County citizens.
Okay. Okay, the motion's been made. All in favor of accepting the goals as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries three, one. Next item of business is item E, Request For The Designation Of A Voting Delegate For The Legislative Conference For The North Carolina Association Of County Commissioners, Scheduled On January the 15th and 16th, 2009, in Raleigh, North Carolina.
Moved to send the chairman.
Okay, there's motion that aye. Attend as a delegate.
Moved to close debate.
I'm trying to think. Not know if I want to go or not any longer, so. No, I think Mr. Mr. Norman is, I think Mr. Norman is, would like to attend as an alternate. We probably need to amend that motion to, to send him as the, as an alternate.
So moved.
Okay. Motion's been made that I be as the delegate and Mr. Norman be the alternate. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Now, the, the other is an announcement of, this is just an announcement, it's nothing to be voted on, announcement of the Legislative Conference for the National Association of Counties, NACO, to be held on March the seventh and eleventh, two thousand nine, in Washington, D.C. Okay, there's no other administrative matters. We have announcements for vacancies occurring on the Board of Commissioners. We have three announcements for the Board of Health. We have one announcement for the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. We have one announcement for the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Six announcements for the Board of Equalization and Review. And now appointments to the boards. We have five appointments to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Are there any motion, any nominations? I'll give you time to look it up if you need. Seeing none, is there a motion? We delay this to the next meeting?
Well, I believe we have one person who's willing to serve again, don't we, Mr. Chairman?
That's on the, that's on the Nurse and Home Advisory Committee, I believe.
One of the appointments, the boards and commissions, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, five appointments. The term for Pat Smith has expired. She's eligible and willing to serve.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I nominate Ms. Pat Smith, Mr. Chairman.
Has Pat Smith been nominated? Any other nominations? Not, I move the nominations be closed, closed, and it's set Ms. Smith by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Ms. Smith will serve. All right. Information Referral, Referral Board, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Ms. Lucille Carter.
So Lucille Carter's been nominated. Other nominations? Seeing none, I move that nominations be closed, and it's set Ms. Carter by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Criminal Justice Partnership Program, nine appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Rena Turner, Joe Crosswhite, Bill Hamby, George Pettigrew, Maureen Hill, Tim Curley, Jim Hout, and Robin Griffin.
Okay. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor of the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Nominations will be, the appointments are confirmed. Home Community Care Block Grant Committee, three appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Anna Rice, Joanne Fint, and Linda Sloan.
Okay. Any other nominations? I move, we accept these nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Purchase of Development Rights Committee, two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Richard Renninger.
Mr. Chairman, I move with closed nominations and accept Mr. Renninger by acclamation.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Mr. Renninger. Recreation Advisory Board, four appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Kevin Smith, Mike Hines, Pam Christopher, and David Holtham.
Okay. Any other nominations? If not, is there a motion? We accept these four candidates by acclamation?
So moved.
I move. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion's approved. Zoning Board of Adjustment, Zoning Board of Adjustment, four appointments.
I nominate Bob Dillinger, Nick Carrington, A.K. Lloyd, and Matt McCombs.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? If not, I move these be accepted by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Stateful Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been tabled, to table this nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion passes. Nurse and Home Advisory Committee, three appointments. I'd like to nominate Beverly Rash. Any other nominations?
I move with closed nomination to accept Ms. Rash by acclamation, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to accept Beverly Rash by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business? New business. Got three items of new business. Mr. Mashburn?
Okay, first item that I'd like for you to, uh, look at is the Ardell County Organizational Chart, and this is, the chart is redrawn to reflect current assignment of responsibilities for day-to-day operations. And the, you recently received a memo that just basically said that due to, to some recent changes that we made some reassignments between the direct areas of responsibility for the Deputy County Manager and the, the manager. I would, I would request your concurrence with this reorganization.
Okay. Any comments from board? All I can say, it looks like it puts a lot of weight under the county manager. He, of course, he instructed me this afternoon, he used to do it all, so I guess he's up to the task.
And, and I will say that most of the areas that will, where I will have direct oversight are areas that are, for one, I have very strong leadership in those positions, and two, will not require as much being outside the, the operator, or outside the office as, as much as it would if I was in the other areas. And Tracy certainly is much more familiar with EMS, fire marshals, all the emergency services, and, and these are also the areas that would probably require, as far as more direct input and participation than the, the ones that I'm retaining under my direct, my control there.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. I think this probably could be accepted as, as information. I don't think it should require a vote, but I think Mr. Mashburn would at least like us concur in, in his organizational charts. If, as long as there's no questions, I'll field the board because it's confirmed.
Special projects would be things like the animal control facility that we're, we're in the process of building now, right, Mr. Mashburn?
That, that's correct. And of course, that is Lynn Neblock.
And he reports directly to you.
That's correct.
Okay. That's fine with me.
Okay. All right, everybody. Next business. This is concerning the architect.
Mr. Neblock, who is the, as, as we just discussed, is the, also in charge of special projects. And at, at a recent meeting, the county commissioners authorized negotiations with Daggett and Grigg Architects to design the new animal shelter. We have not been able to reach a rate for the design that, or a fee for the design that we feel is acceptable with that firm. Although the negotiations are still ongoing, we would also like to have the, the board's approval to go ahead and begin. If we are not able to reach something suitable with Daggett and Grigg, to go ahead and begin negotiations with Walter Robbs, Callahan, and Pierce. And then your earlier motion did not stipulate that we could do that. So we are requesting that you modify your earlier motion to allow us to begin negotiations with that firm in the event that we're not able to reach an, an agreement with Daggett and Grigg's. As you know, the, under the North Carolina state statutes, when it comes to acquiring professional services such as architect and engineers, we're not able to bid that out. What we do is we accept qualifications, make a decision on the basis of experience and, and the size of staff and so forth, that they have many factors. And then we enter into negotiations with the one that we feel that best fits what we're trying to accomplish. We felt Daggett and Grigg's offered that because of their experience in, in this particular type of facility. But we, we don't, we don't feel that they're negotiating in as, in as good a faith as we are. And so we'd like to have an opportunity to look beyond that if, if we're not able to reach a suitable arrangement with them.
Thank you, Mr. Anything more questions of Mr. Mashburn? Is there a motion?
I think a motion would give them that authority. I think it's in the best interest of the taxpayers for them to have some discretion in the matter, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Item number three, Facilities Task Force.
Uh, somewhere years ago, I don't remember exactly when it was now, but you did establish in cooperation with the Art County, or the Art Stateful School System and the Mooreville Grady School District, a Facilities Task Force that periodically meets and reviews the upcoming projects and establishes priority. Part of that is that the chairman and one commissioner, as well as the, the chairman of the school board and a member of the school board, along with several that are appointed, citizens that are appointed to that, would meet periodically for this purpose. I have a letter from Terry Holliday, Dr. Terry Holliday, who is the superintendent of the ISS system, and he is requesting that the task force convene prior to the county commissioners' meeting on February the twenty-seventh. I have not heard from Dr. Edwards. The same memo was sent to Dr. Edwards. Also, I think recently you've been including in that representatives from Mitchell Community College as well, and, and this would also include them in any future meetings. I, I, I'm assuming what he's asking at this point in time is that they would like to meet. The school chairman and, and staff would like to meet, and if y'all are willing to do so, I'll be glad to work with them and try to come up with a suitable time for that meeting.
Did they suggest any particular time?
Did not. Just prior to the twenty-seventh of February.
Since Mr. Norman is not here tonight, and since he serves on that committee along with Mr. Johnson, I think it'd be in line if, if we allow him to be and at least have his say in who serves on this. So it's all right, I'd like to ask us to pull this for tonight and then bring this back up to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Just one point, Mr. Chairman. I was aware, and I failed to mention this to you earlier, we met with them late summer, early fall, and they said that they would reconvene at this committee once, or task force, once they had completed redistricting. So I was aware that they would be making this request at some point.
Well, now they're saying they're not going to redistrict, so.
Yeah.
That's what I understand. Okay? If that's okay, then we'll just put that off the next meeting after Mr. Norman has the chance to offer anything. County managers' report.
I have nothing other to add to the agenda tonight.
Okay. There is no closed session this evening. So the next business, did I hear a motion that we adjourned?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.